Good morning.
This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. Adequate notice, this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of this schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press and the Two River Times on February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. So I'll call this meeting to order and we will have a salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and freedom of the. Sandy, would you mind starting with the whole hall?
Mr. Porterlin.
Here.
Ms. Bush.
Here.
Ms. Scott.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Peolo.
Mr. Roll.
Here.
Mr. Nika.
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Olson.
Good evening, everyone. So we have a fairly full agenda tonight. So what I'd like to do is very quickly get the administrative items out of the way and approved. And then we can go through the different elements of action that we need to take tonight. So we distributed the minutes from the February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-third meeting. Has the board had a chance to review? And if there are any comments, I'd ask that you please make them now. Yeah, I'll motion that those minutes be approved. I'm sorry.
Mr. Porterlin.
Yes.
Ms. Bush.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Noel.
Yes.
Mr. Bayard. Mr. Roll.
Yes.
Mr. Nika.
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson.
Yes. I'd also, the minutes from the executive session were also distributed. I'd ask anyone that has any comments to please make them. I motion that the executive session minutes be approved.
Second.
Mr. Porterlin.
Yes.
Ms. Bush.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Noel.
Yes.
Mr. Roll.
Yes.
Mr. Nika.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes. So we also have the resolution for award of contract to the board attorney. And so I'd ask if there's any comments that we make those. Otherwise, I believe we are in position to award the contract and his firm. Okay, I motion that we adopt that resolution for the award of contract to the board attorney.
Good. You got it, Mike. Second.
Mr. Porterlin.
Yes.
Ms. Bush.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Noel.
Yes.
Mr. Roll.
Yes.
Mr. Nika.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes. Thanks, Doug. And so we'll start with the election of the planning board leadership. And so we'll start with the nomination and election of chair.
Nominate, you, Fred.
Thank you, Mike.
A second.
The nominations?
Any other nominations?
Those nominations.
Move the closed nominations?
Mr. Porterlin.
Yes.
Ms. Bush.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Noel.
Yes.
Mr. Roll.
Yes.
Mr. Nika.
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson.
Yes. Nomination and election of vice chair. I'd like to nominate Dave Peolo. I know he's absent tonight, but I, Sandy, he sent a letter in to you and was interested and expressed his interest and would like to be nominated. So I'd like to put forth his name unless, and then any other nominations.
The nominations? Close.
Mr. Porterlin.
Yes.
Ms. Bush.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Noel.
Yes.
Mr. Roll.
Yes.
Mr. Nika.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes. So item three on the list of all businesses, the appointment of board engineer. And so we understand from correspondence with the borough that Rich has signed a contract with the borough, absent the rider that we had requested be part of that agreement. And so I think we're left with the decision on whether we would like to start another process for for search for a planning board engineer or move forward with Rich. Or I don't know how the length of time, the term of his contract is. Is it for the calendar year? Is it? So it's a term of one year better?
He signed a three-year contract with the borough. This is the second year of his contract.
Okay.
But I would also like to say that the borough never received any request that the rider be included, or at least that's what I've been told. That no network was involved. So when they signed the contract, they weren't aware that a rider was in the offering.
I just have a question because we had an email at the last meeting that the rider had been sent to a labor attorney. So I find it confusing.
No, no, the labor attorney did review the rider.
Okay.
It was the determination by the labor attorney that a rider wasn't necessary, that his contract covered the essential components of the rider. And then when we went into, when we had a discussion, we decided that we would still request that that rider be included. So at that point, the borough was not aware of what went on.
Let me request that we discuss this in executive session.
All right.
Right. I didn't want him to mention.
No, 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 no. Let me request that we go into executive session regarding that. And then we can make this room. Can I ask, we table this discussion?
Okay, fair enough.
Now we'll go forward.
Great. The next item on the agenda for all businesses is a policy on remote participation. And so this item has been, I think, talked about a few times in our meetings. And we have a recommendation from council on how this policy should work. It was distributed prior to the meeting. And so what I think we should do is discuss this. And have a policy because we've had several members ask for the ability to be remote. I think it would work better for the efficiency of the board if we had that option. I have some opinions about how I think this should work. I agree. Yeah, I agree mostly with.
Let me highlight where we are with you. We've passed around basically the underlying legal theory and a proposed draft rule. I would suggest to you that the issues that we need to resolve if we want to go forward with are really about five issues. The first is to make sure that we have the adequate technology. I think we do. I think we established that, that we can do that. The importance is that if this gets done, you know, we need to give adequate notice to the chair as to who's going to be absent. And we need to have adequate notice to Sandy so that we can participate so that it is as though you were here at the meeting is by way of loading up documents, by way of getting documents, by way of hearing testimony, having participating in discussions. As long as we have the technological requirements, I think we can address that. And I think the other things that you have to have to address are really subjective determinations to be made by this board. When I had this policy before for other public bodies, they have taken a position, it's not by anyone new, take a different position, but that a quorum needs to be physically present. In other words, the participating member who's participating remotely, I think that's how we wanted to refer to it, remotely is not counted for purposes of the quorum. So that you have, you know, for us, five members. So they have to be present. And then if you want to participate remotely, that's the additional members. I think that's generally a good policy because otherwise you have a bunch of talking heads where Republicans participate. That can be basically present. So I think you want to make sure that and that limits the number of people that can be away at any given point in time. So you want to make sure that you have a quorum, that quorum, you're not being counted as a quorum if that's the way you want to go. Number of participants. The other issue that you have is what do you do during the executive session? I participated in both ways in which this occurs. Obviously, executive session is a session in which you want to be able to have your discussion freely and back and forth, receive counsel back and forth, whatever issues that are before you, to the exclusion of the public. Are you going to allow the person to participate in executive sessions to do that? Two issues generally arise. You want to make sure that the person is participating remotely as, you know, with their surroundings, separated themselves. So that discussion is equally private because it's a private discussion. We don't want to have the person being participating remotely in a room with people who are hearing, you know, advice of counsel or discussing litigation strategy or discussing complaint that came in. Some boards or some public bodies and boards that I've represented basically say, we don't want you participating remotely for executive session. That can sometimes be a hindrance if you have to decide something quickly and get something moving on. The other thing that you have to be concerned with regarding an executive session is that that individual is going to have to probably have some fashion to log off and log back on out of the public session because while they're participating in a public meeting, they will be heard by the public, see what's been happening in the public session. But if you're going to an executive session, in a sense, you have to give them two Zoom connections. Log out, log back in. So again, you have to make sure that if we're going to allow that to happen in executive session, that we have the physical capabilities or the logical capabilities to do that. The other thing that I've seen for education for boards, all boards and public bodies is to limit the number of times that an individual can do that. Again, this is subjective. Sometimes someone has, I had a situation where of education meeting, one of my members basically was assigned temporarily overseas during the pandemic. So everybody was participating remotely, but it raised an interesting issue. Because that person basically participated remotely for a good portion of the year. You may want to decide if you're going to have this problem, are there a limited number of times that an individual on the board can do that? Those are what I think are the issues. The rest are sort of mechanics. It's notice to the chair that you're going to, when you need to get away, make sure that Sandy has the information. So I think you need to decide, again, technology, I think we've got that. Number of members participating in a given meeting, forum issues, executive session, number of times that you want to allow a person to do that during the course of a ten year meeting here. Welcome, host yourselves.
Doug, I have a question. If a person is participating remotely, once they have fulfilled all the criteria for that happening, they can still vote even though they're not present, correct?
Correct.
And during the pandemic, the council would have executive session. And we did log out, told the public that we would be going into executive session, either action or no action would be taken. We logged on, conducted executive session, came out of that and went back into the public.
That's really the only issue is to whether I should want to do that. And again, as long as you are confident that that discussion is being kept confidential or secure, do that too.
I had a question about that. In the past, when we were doing this during the pandemic, we had to get on a conference call to have an executive session. Do we now have the technology that we can do like a Zoom call? Or would, you know, do we have that capability now that we can do the executive session privately?
You would have to ask Sandy that.
That's what I'm looking at, Sandy.
I'm assuming that we could set up a separate Zoom, but is that how they did it?
Yeah, for the executive, if there was an executive, not a council, this was for planning board.
I think for executive sessions on.
We always.
Yeah, but we.
No, we definitely.
No, we definitely did a.
We had.
It was executive.
It might have been.
Only executive session.
Yeah, it might have been a tech issue that necessitated a conference call, but we didn't have a conference call.
So that's when I just want to make sure that we have.
Technology for the Zoom.
Yeah.
Fully participate, see.
And that's why I'm asking a question. Just want to make sure we can do that.
I don't see a reason why you can't set up a separate Zoom call.
Okay.
Provide for the.
This is a separate number to call.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Is there case law right now or anything saying we have to come up with this?
No. There is, it is a permissive. It is not a mandatory. In other words, say, the the DCA has come out with regulations as to how to do that. There has been some case law that says that if you do this in such a fashion that implies the Open Public Meetings Act, that you can do these things remotely. The issues are generally you want to have a policy in place to make sure that there's notice.
Yes.
So I think you're in good legal ground to do this, but it's not man being.
Right. So but is there any legal liability or risk if we create a policy that says, hey, we don't do remote? Yeah.
You're always going to have interpro liability if something blows up in the middle of the remote where you need five votes for someone, you know, to pass a certain, not mandatory, but saying use variance. We're going to some.
No, I'm going opposite way. I'm going to, no remote. Is there any liability by going?
No, there's no.
Right. We're leaving ourselves open to anything by not offering.
No, remote.
Okay.
So that was going to be my question. Do we need a remote, like, are we asking? Or do we want one?
Maybe I jumped too far.
No, I don't, I don't know.
We had, at the last, at the last meeting, we had actually more than one member express interest in where this was.
If you need a policy, you can do it ad hoc. In other words, determine that, or if you need some members, you need the policy in place to do it.
That's right. And then the question I have is, so let's assume for a minute we adopt the policy. Does that then give the public the ability to zoom in whenever they want? So if we're having a meeting here, let's assume we had the policy in place. Would that mean that the public has the option to zoom in and ask questions over Zoom? Or does the public actually have to show up as they always have? No, I'm sorry.
Our remote policy does not govern participation of the public. Our remote policy is going to be strictly governing how our members interact and how they act as a member of the board. It's not going to be set up necessarily for the public to be doing that. I mean, you can, you can do that, but that's a broader policy.
Right. That would then have to be a different policy, probably much better cap.
There are public bodies that live stream their meeting. Get on a Facebook, and allow that and have the technological ability, technical people in the room, puts them up on the screen. They call things, you know, zoom in. But that's something where if you're going to do something like that, I think, in fairness to Sandy, we're going to need someone, you know, live to handle that. That's a different.
I'm not seeing, so it's a different policy. So the policy that we would, we would craft or determine would be just governing the members of the planning board.
Correct.
That's what this policy is designed to do. I haven't crafted anything beyond.
I mean, can it be as simple as the meetings are in person unless there's, yeah, I mean, if you have an extenuating circumstance, you can have up to two. I mean, I think it could be really.
Have an extenuating cert, policy in place.
Right. But I'm saying like that has to be, there has to be a reason for the remote, right? The request.
Yes.
And it would be.
And that's, and that's what, and in the materials that I've provided, it is where a board member is prohibited from leaving their home under medical conditions or due to a personal or business commitment requiring the board member to be present at the time of the board meeting. It is limited to the, it's not, it's not simply as a business meeting. Personal or business commitment, medical condition.
And it's a maximum of twice in the proposal.
In the proposal, I highlighted, you know, there's, it says there will be a maximum of one slash two board members approved and a maximum of two times. I've highlighted something for you as a suggestion, but again, that's my suggestion. You are not bound by that suggestion.
Do we know historically if there's been an issue with attendance and having a quorum, is there a need for it? Is there, I mean, if there's, if that hasn't.
Without naming names, we did have one board member who requested to participate remotely. And during this, during this past year, my response was, policy is. Policy's been under consideration. And without that, I don't feel comfortable saying you should be doing that.
We haven't had a problem.
That's the question, right? Is there an issue with the quorum that does a disservice to the?
We have, we've always had, we've always been able to have a quorum. I think that what. Which why you got a nine man board. So three people can't make it.
We're all.
Yeah.
We're all.
Three people can't make it because you're sick or busy or everything. Don't make it.
That's right.
It's helpful for people that want to participate and realize that they've, you know, made a commitment and, you know, to be on the board. And for, you know, just trivial reasons aren't able to, right? And so it'd be helpful if they have, you know, the ability to zoom in and then have their vote. I mean, as long as we have a quorum present, we can, we can take action and have votes. But it's always better to have a lot.
Just call the questions to where they're going.
Yeah, I think that's.
Want to have. Remote and not remote.
Yeah.
Before we hash out details.
Yep.
Sure.
So say, I'm sorry.
I, maybe the first question is, does the board want a remote policy? And then if they do, don't they get hash out details? If the board does not want a remote policy, we shouldn't be dealing with the minutia.
Right.
We're just reorganizing debtors.
I will, I will make a motion to not have a remote policy.
Second.
Motion second to have no remote policy?
Mr. Porterlin.
No. That would be. I would like a remote.
I was saying, she wasn't sure.
Yeah.
So that's, now you want a remote.
Yeah, that's the way I'm reading the question. Am I reading it correctly?
Correct.
Ms. Bush?
Yes.
Doubling.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. Roll?
Yes.
Mr. Nika?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Remote carriers.
Okay. So we'd like to next update on the process and timing for the review of the police department plans. And so at the last meeting, we established the technical design and review committee that in accordance with the statute that governs that committee. And over the past month, that committee was going to meet with the police department and the council and provide comments and prepare something that was ready for the planning board. Now, there was an issue of timing in terms of when all, in terms of the urgency of the plans to get in front of the planning board and the time that it would take before the next planning board meeting, which is the third week of April. And so we had talked about the possibility of calling a special meeting. And so what I think we'd like to do with this meeting is understand what progress the technical design or review committee has made with reviews of the plan and then decide as a board if we should have a special meeting to hear that, to hear those plans.
Jimmy, you want to?
Yeah, we met, committees met a few times with Councilman Oliver Barra. And I mean, everything's buttoned up. I mean, any questions or issues we had up to date regarding lighting, noise, landscaping, anything that we came up with, the committee came up with, they have since answered or revised their plans to include. I mean, I comfortably feel that we're in a position to go ahead and recommend a special meeting for them to go ahead and present to the planning board.
And I would also like to add that Councilman LaBarbera is prepared to answer any of our questions tonight. He would like to address the planning board. Also, all members of the planning board by Friday will receive hard copies and digital copies of the proposed police department. So that prior to the special meeting, we will have had the opportunity to examine those documents. And then at the special meeting, the architect, is the engineer coming too? The architect and the engineer will be here to address any questions that we might have.
So those materials will be eligible to be published for the public when, and then you capture time back. The special meeting requires, you know, the notice requirements for that, so.
And Sandy will, you know, if we approve the special meeting, she can.
It's a matter of getting a commitment from board members on a date for a special meeting. You want to wait to have hard copies in hand? Or you want to set the dates now?
Well, I think we should.
LaBarbera would like to address the planning.
Yeah, we have folks here. And then also, I'd like to make a few comments about a special meeting and just make sure we address those.
Yeah. Do you folks want to pull up a chair?
That would be awesome. Thank you. Make sure we have the two couple ones in the passing.
Yeah.
First and foremost, many thanks to the entire planning board, Jimmy, the technical design review committee. It has been a true team effort and sprint these last three months, balancing the two life and safety issues currently present at the PD Community Center, ensuring the appropriate amount of public outreach, right? We did have two open houses with upwards of one hundred fifty plus participants. And what's been really important to us is to maintain that we are approaching this as if this was a standard application, right? Yes, there are certain unique circumstances with municipalities, facilities, but we did not want to take for granted the ordinances that govern the very beautiful aspects of our town. So multiple meetings, every recommendation that was provided with the T D R C has already been implemented. And we wanted to demonstrate to the planning board our willingness to partner, work together on the new police department and new community center. We, a couple of updates just to provide, our community tree expert, the C and E is engaged. There's been independent assessments of the lighting, of the landscaping. You know, we've been very closely engaged, obviously, with Rich on this. And I'm really here to answer any questions that you have. But again, I really appreciate the support. It's been a sprint, feeling like a marathon over and over again. And if you have any questions, I'm here.
It's probably maybe premature for the board till they see the hard copies.
Yeah, absolutely. Which makes sense. You know, if there was any atmosphere that we're interested in.
So we've had two, two open houses, right? So there's been attendance by the public and commentary made by the public. And so what concerns me just as the board is I understand that there are life and safety issues. And I, you know, you very eloquently last meeting told us what those issues were. And so my only concern is just, you know, the perception that we're rushing something and calling a meeting, you know, in between the scheduled plan and what the public might, you know, might think of that. And so, but I think those risks have been mitigated by, A, the fact that you've had open houses and that have been attended by the public and you've known that the comments that have been made by the public at those open houses have been addressed or at least considered. And so, you know, I think that I'd like to hear from the rest of the board about how they feel about having a meeting, you know, calling a special meeting in these circumstances.
Well, perhaps, Councilman LaBarbera, you can tell us why you felt that having a special meeting was important to the process.
Yeah. So when we look at the timing and the schedule, what we're trying to avoid is allowing winter to creep in and prevent us from starting work. So that gives us, you know, notwithstanding our assessments of what we think next winter is going to be, notwithstanding what we think this winter means for next winter. But when we looked at the schedule of timing, our goal is to try to get the project, like, break around in the fall. Because if we hit winter and there is. Because if we hit winter and there is snow or there is inclement weather and then it pushes to the spring. It just further exacerbates the issues that have existed, quite frankly, for the last seven years. Um, it's been an ongoing process. The last. Uh, police department and community center plans were approved from the planning board. We, we think that this. Uh, uh, round is not only more fiscally responsible for our taxpayer, but we actually think it addresses even further. Some of the concerns that were addressed last time, residential friendliness, the size. Um, so when you pair a schedule, when you pair, uh, trying to go out to bid, authorize the contractor, there there's some. Uh, uh, competing challenges as as leading us to the request from the special meeting. Um, so just to provide some.
In consideration of Councilman LaBarbera, 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 excuse me, uh, comment about not looking for any consideration outside of what is the normal process. I think they've gone above and way beyond the normal process. I've heard you, the public, the public comment and everything else, and I think it actually. It hooves us to, you know, sort of, you know, repay a little bit of that and help them move the process along. I think in the public eye would be. You know, to keep the process moving, I don't think it's rushing it to have, you know, a ten day period, but to keep it moving is just respectful of all the extra steps that have been taken so far.
We want to, as far as talk with the neighbors. Uh, on both sides, they're very supportive across the street. She was here a couple of times and. I just want to say one neighbor next door, uh, just yesterday, the church, they're a hundred percent supportive of this and the plan.
Terrific.
Sure. What, if it's, if it's appropriate, if it's not appropriate, tell me it's not appropriate. People tell me that all the time. What is your timetable to go out to bid? And then. What are you looking to do for?
Go out to bid in June, authorize in July. Contractor mobilize in August.
Time is now.
Yes, sir.
Particularly if you have any items that are wrong lead, I'm hearing, I'm hearing. That can be an issue.
And absolutely, and just to add to that, right, um, we, we looked at our, our project plan is probably a hundred twenty items right now. We're trying to transition over to an ownership as we switch into the C V phase, Mr. Kovac. No, 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 it's just trying to be respectful, sir. Um, and what we've attempted to do is we identified critical path items. That we can overlay concurrently. So what does that mean? Um, engaging with the utility companies to get them teed up, um, engaging with our construction official Nick. Um, preliminary analysis of the, the new code analysis, right, with the update to the twenty twenty one I B C. So there's, there's a handful, more than happy to share the project plan with everybody, anybody, if you want that to be part of the component, what's provided Friday, more than happy. We've, we've, we've attempted to uh, lay as much as that over line. Normally, in a standard situation where, you know. The the situations that just aren't there, you kind of lay these out sequentially, right? There, there's, there's a process, but given the uniqueness, we kind of rack and stack. I just want to come back to a comment you made, um, just to, um. To demonstrate kind of the discernment, right? Because if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. I'm going to feel very strongly about that sentiment. So we're going through a similar process with the D P W, right? But we're not looking to streamline or shrink the process like we're doing this because the, the critical issue that exists is the roof. And we're getting that fixed separately, right? So when we come to the D P W renovation timing, those previously approved. It's not going to be with the same sense of urgency and 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 I want to demonstrate that discernment, right? Because again, if everything's a priority, nothing is, so just wanted to address that.
Well, the fact the tenor of the project thus far, and then the, the health and safety issues as highlighted, you know, through the process. We just got to keep it moving, you know, and it's been, as long as we give, we we give it the due process, which I, I again, I think ha- it has been given at every turn. Um, you know, I just want to just. Keep rolling.
Okay, that's right, thank you.
And I would also like to add that every council meeting, uh, Councilman LaBarbera has given a full update as to the process, where we are in the process. Um, uh, points of action that have been taken, uh, a very, very. Big undertaking on your part to make that presentation during council. So again, it's in the minutes of the council, it's available for our residents to see what the updates are, should they not choose to attend a council meeting. Which can also be definitely.
Is there a recommendation from councils to hold special meetings?
By that, they. I know the council would like to have a meeting.
Sooner than later, I'm sure, but I, but I'm looking at it, if we're looking at a bid date in July, if you're looking at any changes. Again, another thirty days, and now we're back to June.
You know. It's a, it's a risk, yeah, absolutely. We're trying to mitigate the risk as much, certain times when a risk becomes an issue and there's nothing we can do. I think the date, just to hit it on the head if we want to.
Because of the schools closing, people being out of town. Um, and now schools closed on Friday, so it would be the Monday before schools close on Thursday. So it seemed like the, the most appropriate date. And the council is desperately in favor of it, but it's up to the planning board to make a decision. April third is a Monday.
Yes, sir. So we'd be looking to have the meeting on April third?
Yes.
And uh, both the architect, Eli Goldstein, the engineer, uh, Rick Anderson will be in attendance. Uh, they plan to bring both a full set of drawings, right? Um, you obviously will get the drawings ahead of time regarding this Friday. Um, presentation materials, the whole kit and koodle, uh, T D R C will actually be here, right? Chief, uh, Betsy, obviously, Rich Bardella, um, so make sure that every subject matter expert is here to answer. Uh, any questions, right?
Well, sir, I I see members of the public here, so is, does any, any member of the public, uh, man in the back, I think you, were you looking to speak? Uh, yeah, oh, okay. Oh, okay. I know April third, I'll probably have a problem.
Do we have a forum?
That, that, that's it now, now, it's now, do we have a forum for to make April third?
Yeah, for me.
Sir.
Good for me, I can make it with it.
And so we'll, we'll have all the materials that that need to be, um.
Those materials by this.
By this Friday, and then that's going to give us enough time for notice, Doug and.
Should as long as we get the right. We're just talking about this evening, we should have enough time to get any notices in newspapers. Um, and those documents hopefully will be able to be reviewed by the public in advance.
Yes, and and Mr. Kovac, on uh, Monday, the twenty seventh, we have our governing body meeting. And so everything that's provided to you on Friday will be equally shared as well on the twenty seventh with the public as part of our standard. Um, updating process, right? So every single document, PowerPoints, all of that, just in keeping in line with the transparency we've had since January ninth, whatever.
Need to make a motion? Yeah, we make a motion for a special meeting for April third.
I'd like to make a motion to have a, uh, special planning board meeting, uh, on April third to discuss the community center and police department, um, review class. Second.
You know, authorize your professional staff to take any more action necessary to effectuate that meeting.
Swear on?
Yes.
Ms. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Tatch?
Yes.
Mr. Roll?
Yes.
Mr. Roll?
Yes.
Mr. Nika?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Awesome, I can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
See you in three weeks.
I'll be away a whole entire meet, so it doesn't matter what day it was, I could make it, but uh, I just want to say that a hundred percent support of it. The architect, hand in hand, we went over it many times, changed a few things here and there. Uh, community department correction for ourselves, uh, we're all good, uh, so we will be here to represent me. Uh, but we are just, I know last time you asked, are we a hundred percent with it and, uh, or all stands and absolutely, excuse me, right now. And uh, I'll be a phone call away if you need me that night, by all means, give me a call, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll, we'll now, we'll now move on to uh, to the new business, which is, is consideration of the new ordinance. Uh, twenty twenty three dash O two, amending chapter thirty, revise, chapter thirty revised zoning regs to protect the character of existing neighborhoods. Yes, please.
Uh, generally, th- this is, uh, the role of the planning board with regard to any development regulation that we have. Things that the planning board does, they take a look at that development regulation. And uh, advise mayor and council as to whether or not the regulations consistent with master plans on ordinances. And or any other matters that we want to bring to their attention consistent with the ordinance. Um, my understanding, my understanding, probably most of the boards understand that is that the definitions that we've been. That are now presented here, largely what we're being modifying the definitions, the working definitions that will go into the development regulations. You know, fine tuning what a cellar is, fine tuning their base, what a basement is. Uh, fine tuning, you know, what the uh, the floor area ratio uh, is, how we're going to define a crawl space. Uh, most of these are highlighted, unless there's a specific issue to go into with regard to them, in terms of what our limited role is. Um, I I don't see how development regulations that clearly define are at odds with the master plan. Or or the, or the, uh, development regulations, obviously we're fine tuning those. But there's nothing in the master plan that says you shouldn't have definitions or have definitions that are clear for everybody to use. Uh, the vast, as I say, the vast majority of them, um, second because. Working now with planning board for the middle of years, some of these things are. Uh, provisions that are, for lack of a, a more poetic way to put it, we, we, you know. Arm twisted folks, you know, to to get these definitions in, even though they weren't before. And the development regulations to say, look, this is what you're, that we don't want the, the finished floor to be higher than this level, uh, often the finished grade, things like that. Um, there's some clarification for things that we, we've wanted to have for a while. For those of you who are concerned that we're striking quartz, we, it's still an accessory structure. It's still going to meet the yard requirements and those things, it's just superfluous at this point in time. If there's a specific definition that concerns board members, we want to have a discussion about that at night. I'll leave that to you, but our rules fairly limited, and as we've done in the past, if there are any specific concerns that we have. We would highlight those from mayor and council, if we were to come to a decision that these are inconsistent with the development regulations or the master plan. I'm, I'm not recommending that, but if you were, that doesn't change what happens at mayor and council, it just heightens the vote requirement by mayor and council to do that. Okay, are there any questions with regard to that? And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Chair.
That's uh. Um, any, any questions or comments, um, from the board? And I know there are members, uh, of the public that are here to, um, to talk about this as well, so.
I have one question. This is regarding the, uh, existing grade or average existing grade. I remember in some of our earlier discussions, we had talked about it being equal to the crown of the road or using that as, as a, um. As a delimeter, I guess, or as a point of reference. And I I see that that language has been changed, so I was just curious if anybody knew what was the process that led to that.
Yeah, I do not know the process that led to that change. I know that there have been a number of ways, there are a number of ways to. Define your finished grade, particularly where you may have some four corners and those things. I know when we've used. That elevation, the crown of the road, the pass is where we, we had it very defined in a sense. Elevation that we wanted to reach and that was, and we wanted to make sure what we understood that. If there was going to be some grading, whether it's going to have to be some grading, you know, sometimes you have a significant elevation difference from back to front or back to back. That we use that as the benchmark, as to where we were working off of and to make sure that the applicant could do that in a sense. Like that is more of a point of reference rather than fine tuning. As to how we define what finished grade is. There are a number of definitions that bring this book to you, to move some, sometimes as a bible. Uh, to, to, to figure those things out. My understanding is that this. Process has gone through a significant transition and some of the members may be able to speak to that as to how it got to those numbers.
Okay, yeah, it, I, I was asking because it's just, it's different than from what my memory serves as what was originally presented, uh, was, uh, years ago now.
So real, real quick, before we, we get to members of the, of the public, Doug, so. Can we, can we just make sure we, we reset for the board exactly where we are in this process, right? So sure, so the, the council has had a, a first reading. They, they've now brought it back to us to, yeah.
Under. Fifty five D, I think it's dash twenty six. Um, generally, there's a first reading. By mayor and council, the particular development regulation, which is then referred to the planning board. Uh, for review and comment within thirty five days. If you make no comment. Mayor council simply go forward. Generally, we make a comment. Um, and report back to them, we usually prepare a writing, I collect your thoughts, your concerns, your comments, your comments from the public. Put those into a writing to mayor and council, and so that's instructed for them. Um. After they get those comments, or after thirty five days passes, which will come sooner. Mayor and council are then free to go forward and do their second reading.
Yeah, so, so council has, has requested that we, we provide comments by April fifteenth. And so, um.
Process normally in the past with the board has been by actual. Collective scribe, if you will, and get a, a report up to mayor and council, shares those thoughts.
So, um, there are members of the public here that would like to, to provide comments and and also, uh, provide some color and perspective. So I'd ask that those members of the public please come forward.
I don't really.
This, this is, this is a riot.
Please say your name and.
My name is Todd Lee, and I am just a resident.
Thanks.
You want to smart me in? No, we're not, because we're not really taking testimony, we're just taking your comments. So, so I'm here because this was a project that I've been intimately involved with for, um, what feels like my whole life. And so when I saw it on your agenda tonight, I invited you to ask me to be here. To uh, try to help clarify anything that might be a question, and I can invest your, Mr. Boarder. Um, or provide a better background or whatever else, you know, you might like, um, or whatever you don't want. Um, so it's entirely up to you. Um, I, I, I can address Dave's question if I could start. And then, you know, you tell me what you want to do, but just to, to run through the history of this. A little bit more completely, um, there was a committee that was formed by the council. A mayor ago. There's actually three separate committees and three separate mayors ago, and they all kind of tied into this. But the outgoing mayor had a committee and then it kind of fell apart. The incoming mayor reformed the committee. That committee met and there was a memo that was sent to this board on March seventh, twenty twenty two. Um, and that memo, um, actually is under the signature of Mayor Hopper. Uh, Councilwoman Tatch, Councilwoman, uh, Logan Neff, Peter Nachevman, also the vice chair of the zoning board and myself. Uh, who is presently the chairman of the zoning board and the outgoing chair of this planning board. That memo covered essentially five issues that the committee decided they wanted to see addressed in the near term. Uh, that committee, I will remind, uh, Miss Tatch, and Drew behind me at all. Um, had other issues that they wanted to address. This is not the end of the project, this is the beginning of the project. But it was, um, intended, um, that the planning board review, uh, five issues. Uh, the first thing related to. Uh, an exception that was in the regulations that relate to the ability to build a porch inside of the front yard setback. Um, and so it was recommended that that be repealed and it be investigated further by the planning board. Second was to consider establishing something called a prevailing front yard setback. Prevailing front yard setback would address conditions such as you see on Little Road. Where you have the houses that are set back at a historic point. And then you have new houses which are then set back at the minimum. Which, um, allows new houses to be set forward of whatever happens to be what's called the prevailing front yard setback of the existing structures. The third thing. So what it was, the, the idea was that, I can tell I'm not here to keep this short. Um, the idea was that we create a new minimum and that would be the prevailing. Um, which would then complement the minimum, which, which is established outside of the existing development pattern. Um, the third thing was to establish first floor elevation and to try to limit. How high new homes could be set based on the existing grade and based on the existing development pattern in a neighborhood. The fourth thing was to clarify cleanup and restructure habitable floor area. Habitable floor area is the, um, overriding regulation, which triggers a devariance and variability of intaters to M L U L. And the limited authority of the borough to regulate, um, proposals that exceed the ordinance standards. And the, um, the mission was to redefine it in a way that it was more regular and that it was easier to interpret and understand and work with. The fifth item, no, there's six. Uh, the fifth item was to eliminate what had been established as a penalty for an attached garage. Um, as one of the.
Um, as one of the, as the, really the only result of the land use committee that was formed, um. And operating three or four years ago, I'm sorry, probably more than that. There was a plan. At least five, given all the houses, but. In 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 prior iterations of attempts to constrain the size of houses, an idea came out of. The discussion that we penalize attached garages, because attached garages wind up having. Big areas above those garages, which are largely built as attics, therefore unregulated. Um, and creating uh, almost, almost unto itself, uh, some significant issues with regard to um. Uh, encroachments on airlight and open space in this sense of houses being bigger than they should. Um, and so because the proposal was to change the ordinances and fix it in another way to regulate the size. The recommendation was to repeal that restriction, so there would no longer be a penalty for attached garages. Recognizing these other uh, checks and balances to contain structures. And the last was as a result of the zoning board uh, meeting, which was a a meeting that was held in a public session. I believe it was, it was in twenty twenty-one, fall twenty twenty-one, the overwhelming sentiment of the public was get on trees. Fix the tree ordinance, make it work, this is a big problem. It wasn't even the subject of the meeting, but it came through loud and clear, so that was the sixth thing. The tree ordinance was addressed independently, the tree ordinance is floating around in the ether. Uh, we spent a lot of time working on it, it's a good ordinance. I hope that it um, picks up steam and gets adopted, but it's not harder what's before you this evening. That committee sent the memo to the planning board. This planning board thoughtfully created another committee. It brought in members of the zoning board, brought in members of the planning board to have discussions about the recommendations. And to try to further tease out what those ordinances should look like. Um, that committee uh, of this planning board on July sixth, twenty twenty-two, sent a memo to, um. I'm sorry, this is the planning board's subcommittee wrote a memo to the planning board. Which went through what the recommendations were as they were developed by the committee, working with uh, council, specifically Mike Byrene. At that time, the zoning board council, which actually done a lot deeper and created the first draft of the definitions. They had existed before, but they were then fully incorporated into a, this'll get it done. This board. Had discussed these at the time and sent these to the council. That was in, it it actually went over, Doug sent it over in July of twenty twenty-two. This took nine months. This took. A long time.
A long time.
I will tell you that there's not a word in here that we have not toiled over, there is not a negotiation that has been had on had. Um, we went through it all, um, and what we did was, I think that we touched on um, different elements of the goals. Uh, and what we tried to do was to fix the things that were broken. And that would need to be adjusted um, in order to comply with the intent. Um, of the original land use committee developed by council and the subcommittee uh, that was um, put together between the zoning and the planning. Um, and so I I I asked Peter to be here, and Peter, I don't know if you want to come up.
The only, the only thing I would mention is that we did. Eventually, uh, have several meetings with both Nick Wachinski and Joe Lele to discuss. And tweak and go over our ideas and see if they make sense, and that was another. Two months worth of work. And we arrived at this.
Yeah, there there were a lot of discussions, um, the um, the borough's building department had a significant. Level of input in terms of the things that were identified that needed to be tweaked. There are a series of tweaks uh, that they wanted to make while we were at it. Uh, and at this point, it's my understanding that the um, the ordinance as proposed um, has the full support uh, of the building department uh, in terms of implementation.
Doug, can you explain more of the prevailing yard setback change?
So the prevailing front yard setback change was originally thought to be a rule that would apply across the entire borough and all properties. Um, because of some. Resistance by the building department, it was changed to only apply to new construction. Um. Uh, I I think there was the feeling that an existing home, which wanted to have a front porch addition. Um, would be burdened by this ordinance where that might not have any intent. And it is true that the intent really is to tackle these two lot subdivisions. Um, I think the. I don't know if they're here, I'm sure they're not, but the 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 best example of this is just past Schwanke's Pond on River Road. The house was built about twenty-five years ago, twenty. Twenty years ago, so as you just passed Schwanke's coming to the east. On the right-hand side, just past the road, whatever that is, there was a prefab construction that was built. Um, it had cedar siding and since been painted, that entire house sat in front of, in the front yard of the adjacent neighbor. The original house was demolished and the entire house was pushed over maybe forty feet. And so now that home that sits immediately to the east when they look to the west or threadback, all they see is the side of that house. So the idea, I think, as it sits, would not prevent that. Would not prevent that? Yeah, would prevent that. It's not subdivision later, it would be new construction later, it would stop that. Um, and effectively what would happen is, if you take that lot as an example, the the setback, I believe that's our five, would be twenty-five feet. Because the prevailing front yard setback in that area is more like fifty feet. The new development would have to um, sit at fifty feet. You could not be proud of the prevailing setback, which is established by measuring the homes on either side. Um, and so while the ordinance uh, table C would say twenty-five feet. That assessment would bring it back in line with the other houses. So that's the end result, new construction order.
Right, and so prevailing setback is based on the adjacent houses.
Yes.
So one neighborhood, it's uh, fifty feet, another neighborhood is thirty feet.
That's two hundred feet, right?
Well, it's two hundred, it's two hundred feet, I think by either side, we can, we can take a look at it.
Yeah, that's what it says, two hundred feet.
But you mean the setback of the actual home, not.
That back.
Finding prevailing.
Yeah, so different on River Road. Exactly, yeah, yeah.
But it's based on neighboring.
Yeah, adjacent, adjacent, okay, actually, see where you fall on it. Which we've discussed this many times before in this meeting, yeah. And then the uh. In regards to the the uh, elevation, the first floor elevation, so where 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 are you grabbing that height from?
So, let's take a look at the definition, um, there's a lot of things that factor into. What the actual first floor elevation calculation is, and it actually ties into Mr. Boarder's question as well. But let's read the actual definition. So the finished floor elevation, this doesn't, it's not patented. Um, the measure of the height from the average existing grade, so that's one definition we need to look at. To the surface of the finished floor and of immediately constructed on the foundation of the water slab on break. So. The idea is we have to do the average existing grade first. And then the measurement is going, F F E is going to be the measurement distance from that to the top of the finished floor.
Right.
So call it hardwood, top of the hardwood, down to that average existing grade. And there is a constraint, and that number is thirty, it's it's a standard established later, but it's it's thirty inches. Uh, from that, from that uh, average existing grade. When you look back at the average existing grade.
It's four corners now, it says minimum of four corners.
So the average existing grade was something that we discussed. Uh, I think it's under.
It says a grade, it's a G, it's a grade. Grade, average, existing, so great.
Right.
Great.
Yeah, great, comma, average.
Right, so the average of the existing grade of a lot with good existing grade. As determined prior to any demolition or construction. And it's based on a survey or a plot plan that shows the existing spot elevations or cartography on the lot taken for minimum of the four corners of the existing principal structure. Uh, or accessory structure from the location of the proposed structure if different. So the idea is that you have an existing grade established today, everybody does it on all of your lots. And so that grade is established based on what exists today, or based on what has been approved by a board through a site plan process. And so the idea is to pin that grade today. So that the first floor elevation of your construction can't be taller than thirty inches above that.
Got it.
And the purpose in that is to combat the ski slopes that are being constructed where you have. Houses that are coming up out of the ground and you wind up with these mounding up towards the 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 uh, the balance of the first floor. The idea would be that we're going to keep the new structures down in the ground. So that they look similar, present similar to existing structures. So that when you have these infill developments, you're going to wind up with things that are more cohesive with the existing development patterns. Versus a new house where you step onto the front porch and you're literally looking down into your neighbors on either side. And the first floor is really halfway up, the first floor of the existing stuff. And and more and more, that's the, that's the current development trend.
Right. Yeah, thanks.
People, people want eight-foot basements.
Still.
So, so look, so this is the reason that this happens. Um, we implemented a new rule through the building department that we needed to test for groundwater. And so the new standard was implemented that you had to construct the basement floor at two feet above seasonal groundwater. And so when they did that, both through the development of precast construction, where you're actually constructing your foundation offsite and shows up. Or block construction, people wanted to have tall basements regardless of where that floor could be set. And so the standard that we have right now is there's a measurement of the existing grade indeed. And there is, based on table C, a maximum height for the ridge of the house, but there is no restriction. On what you do with all of that distance. And so what's happening is that people are constructing their basements, they are moving the dirt up. The total height of the structure is actually being regulated. So if it's thirty feet, thirty-two or thirty-five, depending on what zone, that is restricted based on the existing grade. The problem is that you have no perception of what that is, because the grade itself changes a lot.
Right.
And so while the ridge may not go higher than what the, what the restriction is, the perception of all of it is bulk. Obviously, the the lower end of the house is much bulkier than the top of the house. So this F F E is going to require that everything sit, um. That then plays into the attic getting started, not really getting this stuff. The, the, the idea of the attic. Which effectively is um, creating now the opportunity to create what we used to call habitable attic. Which is an attic that you can live in and finish the living space. You can do that now for free, I use air quotes for free, because we use the old caps. So with regard to habitable floor area, you could have twenty-two hundred in R five, thirty-two twenty in R ten. And then that was regulated based on floor area ratio, so twenty-eight hundred on a hundred by a hundred block. Whatever, so when you create a fixed staircase to a third floor, it becomes a living level. When you had the right to do a habitable attic, it means that one-third. Of the attic is livable with seven feet or above being the ceiling height. And when you did that in the past or currently without these regulations, all that would count as floor area. So you could do it, but it counted against your cap. What we're doing now is we're offering that for development of new space. In the third level of the house, without counting it against the cap, as long as it follows that standard. So as long as it's habitable attic type, with only one-third of it being above seven feet. And the reason that was done is because the regulation that's now going to restrict F F E. Is going to restrict your ability to build these basements on some lies. So the idea is to acknowledge, recognize and appreciate, the reason the houses are bigger is because people want them to be bigger. They don't want to spend all this money and not have enough space. The question is, where do you put it? And so the idea is that if you allow them to put it in the attic. Then you are not negatively impacting the neighborhood, airlight, open space, because the addicts are there anyway.
Yeah.
And the reason that we didn't touch the cap is because thirty-two twenty and twenty-two hundred has been established over a really long period of time. And so it was a lot easier to leave that alone for the first and the second floor. So that regulation is tightened up through a new definition of habitable floor area, which is now called floor area. We've removed the word habitable because that was being used by architects to manipulate and 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 cause our construction department to be tied in knots. Um, and so now it's simply floor area, everything counts. Garage, or the addicts, rather, are free as long as they're habitable of that nature. And a cellar is still free, doesn't count against the square footage, as long as it sits below the thirty-inch F F E requirement. That was a lot. Mr. Wardler, you would ask the question, I just don't want to knock it back to it, about the crown of the road. The discussion about the crown of the road, I believe that you're referring to, was a discussion about actually translating for residents. How the height, the F F E now, is going to be calculated for any given law.
Right.
So the discussion was translating what the final F F E is, and look, the F F E is going to be twenty-five, twenty-seven feet above sea level, right?
Right.
The hell does that mean, sitting at the street? So the idea was to require in the ordinances. That the plans show how that measurement is calculated from the curb. We talked about the crown of the road at the time, we went with the curb. And so what it now requires, this ordinance now requires, is that if your F F E is twenty-seven feet. And what that's going to be is effectively five feet above the curb level, then that five feet is going to have to be called out. So now when Mrs. Smith calls to the building department and says, the house behind me looks horrible, what's going on? They can be given that information and they can walk to the front of the house and they can calculate themselves. What that F F E is supposed to be, and they can make sense of it and understand why that's in compliance. Where currently that's a problem, and we have a communication issue with residents, because residents see things, they don't understand. They don't think should be permitted, but it is. And so hopefully that's going to help people um, feel more comfortable, that the things that are going up are proper and for the ordinances.
Yeah, I I I may be thinking of a different application, but I also know that. On one, we were using that, was where we knew there was going to have to be some significant creating at the site. And we want, and we wanted to land one.
Well, I I I think that you properly um. Uh, commented with regard to past efforts to tether subdivision applications. With regard to restrictions on F F E, with the ordinances did not provide them, where we had applicants voluntarily agree. To keep that F F E down, because we did recognize that that might be was a problem. We would no longer have to do that, it's not going to be required by the world, no.
Good, yeah.
Do you have another question? Are there any other uh, questions by by any of the board members?
So, in terms of what we're addressing here, um. What is the, I mean, are we addressing more ambiguity? In the neighbor looking at the construction that's going up, are we addressing ambiguity for the building department? Or are we addressing, you know, people coming in with these out of character, sort of out of line of sight plans? And to the extent we are, um, which I know, you know, there's a lot of push to protect the character of the town. Is the, yeah, then, as the builders and the new, you know, sort of new construction comes in. The next step would then be applying for a variance, right? And that, so what happens when we start to see the request for variances? Against this new, against the new ordinances or the new definitions?
Well, first thing that's going to happen is everyone's going to say bad things about me. Um, I assume that I'm going to be, have all the dark side, yeah, right, they didn't necessarily do. I think that the way, the way that we left our discussion with the building department was that we needed to review this. After we started seeing applications come in. The idea here is not to create some reason for anyone to have to come before the zoning board. I assure you, that's not what the zoning board wants, that's not the idea, properly zoning a town. Um, and I think that the one thing that is probably open to question. Is how well the thirty-inch F F E restriction is going to lay out over lots. We discussed certain lots which have significant rating changes. There are a handful of areas in town where it's really super steep. And so there was discussion about providing more flexibility with regard to the thirty inches. The problem is that on a flat lot, you really don't have that problem. And thirty inches is two and a half feet, and so you can get into the mechanics of exactly where that thirty inches goes. But if you take a look at existing housing stuff, thirty, forty, fifty years old, what you'll find is that basement windows are in wells. And top of lot comes out probably somewhere between six and twelve inches above existing grade. From there you have your um, your floor joist, which is now like a twelve-inch um, T G I or whatever they call it. And then you've got the first floor, uh, your hardwood material on top of that. So it used to be that twenty-four, twenty-six inches was plenty. Um, now clearly there is a desire to add bigger windows in the basement and all the rest. And so people are going to have to do one of two things, or either they're going to have to adjust their plan to their expectations to meet these ordinances. Because we've decided that the. That the all-in result of this is the type of house that we want to be built in Fairhaven to preserve the character as we know and love it. Um, or they're going to have to come to the zoning board and make an argument as to why these rules shouldn't apply to that. That's no different from any regular night at the zone. And so the zoning board will have to make a determination on a case by case. So if you're dealing with a lot that's super slope and they have problems. So if you're dealing with a lot that's super sloped and they have problems, but it's an average. So it isn't just thirty inches from the, from the low point, it's an average from the back and the four corners, and that's the way the building department wanted it. There was a proposal that we do something different, which I won't go into, but this is what they wanted. Um, and so those, those applications will come before the zoning board. And you know, if they are as I'm imagining them, when they had a steep slope and they had to work around it, it's almost within the definition of what a C1 hardship does.
Geography, geography is.
It it's it's literally one of the reasons you get a C1 basket, just the physical conditions of the site.
Yep.
And is this, is there, and perhaps this is, you know, if it's, it's too speculative a question, but do we observe as you, as these. You know, as this, you know, the definitions have been refined and talked about over such an extended period. I mean, do we have in town, you know, is there some sort of, you know, stratification between people coming with plans that. Want to build a house, they come to town or they're in town, they want to rebuild their house. And you know, there's one character of sort of how hard people are pushing against the ordinances versus spec building. Because I think that's one of the, you know, if I'm a gambling man, a lot of this will, you know, address. Spec development versus, you know. People, again, I don't know anyone, actually I know my one neighbor who rebuilt their house and was probably full of variances, but you know, it's uh. I I guess I'm, you know, i- i- you know, I'm I'm tuned to the fact that we're addressing a character issue, right? We're trying to maintain the character of the town. And I really like that, and I guess my question is, is this going to, you know, is this sort of squeezing the Jell-O where. You know, we're going to address it here and it's going to come out somewhere else, and I guess the the corollary to that would be. You know, what's next? And maybe that's a separate conversation, but I, you know, um I'm. Trying to understand and this isn't, you know, this is more probably burning everybody's time at eight forty-two, but. Are we, you know, are we going far enough in this? Do you anticipate with all the thought and time dedicated to this? That this is going to start to sort of help direct. You know, what's going on in terms of the character of new development in the town, or do we have to take, should we collectively zoning and planning be thinking? For about that next step?
So I I think that it's, first of all, it's a very thoughtful question. I think that uh ordinances uh require regular meetings. And I think that we've been derelict in doing that very, I've participated for long enough to say that um. There's been far too much talk and far too little action. Um I will tell you that there is not a question in my mind that I question all day long. That ten years out, this ordinance will provide houses that will cause my kids to want to come back and live in Fairhaven because it will look familiar to them. And I think that if you allow things to continue the way they are, this is a different town, it's already a different town. Um but this is what's going to change it back to what it was. Um in terms of restricting the development to look more similar to what we're used to. Um ninety percent of the applications, I just threw that number out, but I think. But I said it with authority, um do not require variances, any type. They go before the building department, they're given zoning compliance letters and they're developing. And so those are almost all developers. Developers have no interest in the nonsense of dealing with the zoning board, the time, the expense, the uncertainty, it's just not the way development deals are done. If you can avoid a board, you avoid a board. So they will comply. Um and with regard to who does come before, they tend to be homeowners. They tend to be people that have an idea of what they want and they want to try and get the approval to build the thing that they want to build.
Yeah.
Um those discussions are hard, every night at the zoning board, those discussions are hard. Because it starts with somebody here that says my clients are fantastic people, we know them, they're local, they are nice people. But that doesn't have any relevance to what it is that we do. So these standards, and even if you leave the whereas clauses in terms of where it comes from. Its origin is the, it it's your report, the 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 master plan that you guys are in charge of. Been talking about overdevelopment of lots in Fairhaven for decades now. Um this is the first thing that's happened since the incorporation of habitable floor area in the first instance. Twenty-five years ago, which Fairhaven went all the way to the Supreme Court to defend our ability to regulate under habitable floor area. This is the first real substantive thing that we've done to try and constrain these new structures. And my belief is that people will continue to come to Fairhaven regardless of how high their house sits on the lot. Because they love it here, and if you spend enough money and you focus on developing a house that's going to be well-suited on the lot, everybody wins.
So, um are there any other comments by any members of the board? Thank you, Tom.
You got it.
Uh any other, any other comments for Tom before me?
Thanks for all the work, I've been part of the planning board when this has been going on and I'm really glad to see this finally moving forward. I thought we were moving forward with this a year or two ago, so I'm glad that it's finally worked.
Just want to talk. Yeah, um it's been a, it's been a long road, um Fairhaven's worth it, um this process is worth it. Uh it's interesting to sit on this side, but there's a certain gravity to what you're hard doing, um please don't ever, ever underestimate the importance of it. Um it's nice to be here for the night.
Thank you, Tom, really appreciate you coming and uh and helping us with this tonight. Um I I do again want to acknowledge that there are members of the public here and and does anyone wish to to speak on this matter or perhaps any other shirt?
If you guys adopt tonight or send your recommendations to the council, what's the timeframe of future approvals or when do these ordinances go?
Depends on when they do their second reading, then I think you have a, I think. I don't know your form of government, but I think you're going to have a thirty-day waiting period after you.
Yes.
Enact before it's actually gone.
Will the building department look at those if they approve that? Uh I remember they can. Uh show today about an attic issue. They told me on tonight. And so just curious, will they stop, won't we have anything as?
Excuse me, can you identify yourself?
Now the same final. Um, no, I'm just curious if uh they'll stop looking, could they like, we can tell you today what they are, but if they adopt them, then like.
I don't know that we can speak for the building department or how they, how they walk things through.
Okay. Uh I think the pleasure. As a builder, I I mean, everything you did in that, we shot and committed here that it's so forward-thinking.
Yeah.
For the builders as well, okay, my my houses are set at grade because that's the way the houses turn over. And to give the attic, the garage too, I don't, I'm not, I don't live in Fairhaven. But the garage in the back of the house for the sake of saving the floor area, I think is. Just not the best use of property, living pool area, the kids can't play at your yard when people drive around. That was always something that was just.
So the um. If there are no other comments from from the board, I think.
It can be a very short response to Mayor Council too.
Right, I I said, so so the 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 uh I I think. We would, we would say that we have no, we have no comments and that and that.
Pies with our role as 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 we're here and worth it, there's nothing that is objectionable by way of the master plan is on the ordinances and we. Favorably review the comments.
Can you send a letter to the borough to that effect?
Yes, that's what I do, we, that's what we've done every single time.
Try to make sure.
I will. You can direct me to do that.
So I'll make a motion to have uh council prepare a a a letter to mayor and council. Outlining our discussion here tonight and then we have no further comments.
Just a fresh recollection, each one of my letters starts with Dear Mayor and Council. At their regular meeting of blank, blank date, in accordance with its responsibilities under NDA S A forty-eight. That's our review. We'll send it out.
Right.
Somebody want a second now?
Yes.
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 Mr. Noel.
Yes.
Mr. Rob.
Yes.
Mr. Nicka.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes. So um with that being all of the um. The the items on the agenda, uh we'll go, we'll go to.
Open just for general public comment?
Oh, yeah, I I I thought I did that, but again, any, any, um I, as I said, I do do recognize that there are members of the public here, so. Did anybody have any comments or questions on any of the matters that we've discussed this evening? Yes, ma'am, please, please approach.
I just have a question. You thought you well, maybe you and zoning board have allowed lots to be sliced and diced into. Really small pieces of property, how much more than one year?
Well, so I.
It 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 is hard to speak to whether or not an applicant can be able to meet their burden. But to the extent that they do. Or maybe advise to allow them to, I I don't. I'll use your term, slice and dice, but as to the extent that the subdivision complies or they comply with. Those burdens they have. Granted variances. We can rewrite the law.
No, the point being, if you got, if you put the front lot is. Deformed or it's it's slightly less than fifty feet. You judge the size of the house going on that lot, say the second lot is thirty seventeen, I there's there's one. House on Wyndham Street, I think that has like fifteen foot range and they let them go to. To go to the tree store in on that one. If it's probably the smallest, I don't know.
Why, so so I, I'll just ask a quick question, um so we ha- I mean, there are. There is an ordinance on subdivisions, right? There's a minimum, right, and so we we have, we have ordinance that. That delineates um whether a lot can be subdivided or not and. And if those, you 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 know, if those lot, it's not the planning boards. Final, like, we don't have to find a decision on that, that's not a.
It would go to the zoning board.
Yeah, I would, I would submit that the very ordinances we were just talking about though are an attempt. To um as I was saying, address character, so it makes it, I I think. It it forces everyone at the table to think more about. You know, not just what the law will permit, but what the intention of the zoning ordinances are. And how they match with the character of the town, so I actually think that the gentlemen in front of you that have worked so hard on this are actually trying to do. What you're asking and what might, as you know, what me as a resident of Fairhaven, um and you know. Sort of uh, you know, I appreciate the aesthetics as well. We've all been trying to think about how to protect the character of the town within the bounds of what people are allowed to do with their lots, but I. I'm actually really encouraged, having been part of this conversation over the last few years, encouraged that we're doing things that are forcing. People to really think about what they're doing with their land, with that property, so even if we can't say. I don't like your house, I don't like the design, what we can say is you're not going to take that house that, you know, is. Crazy and stick it in the front of the lot, you know, ten feet in the air, which I think. You know, we all have different opinions on what's, you know, aesthetically attractive or interesting. Um and that's the tougher part, but what we can do is make people sort of think about. You know, are they physically in character with the town? And I also think that forces a reflection of whether or not you're aesthetically in character. And and again, that's a, that's a very, that's a very sort of, you know.
I think it's that it's the best, but basically. Once somebody is a taxpayer and they own their property. If a home is the castle type thing, that you should be pretty much able to do what you want, except for size, the minimum, the things like that. Aesthetically, anything you want with the property.
I, and I think the law agrees with you and I think, uh you know, for better or for worse, I I have to agree, you know, everyone has their own opinions. But if we can have houses line up, you know, in a way that the frontages match.
Right.
Um you know, and not, you know, again, built way up in the air. I think that's going to go a long way to, you know, encouraging people to think about the very issue you're bringing up, which is, does this match? Or doesn't it? And if it doesn't match, they're going to have to come before the zoning board and have, and and and, you know, argue why. Uh it should be another way.
I was surprised when they built the, do have the river road, because they seem to be so much closer to the river road than the. House that was too large to put in there, and that also happened on hand. Road near river, the house, because they put down to accept it like one two lot.
The ones that got away. Fred, Fred, you might want to just quickly address a part.
Yeah, absolutely.
I I just, I just want to say right that the the perception might be that the planning board has permitted all these subdivisions. But the truth is that every subdivision needs to come before the planning board, even ones that are fully defined. So the principle of work is fair treatment of everybody exactly as they are. And so we used to need a two-lot subdivision without a row or the ones on hand, those were hundred-foot lot. And so the subdivision line was drawn into two, and so. You know, we're choosing spread, then oversize life and not be affected by it, when it immediately conforming as two. You would need to attract people that own their property and say, well, the truth is different. And we're going to keep those larger lots exactly as they are. And so there have been even, like, another jurisdiction, there's not been a movement like that. And I think that the reason for that is because at the end of the day, the consistency of the development is. Important and not trying to figure out how to preserve. What's in the past, which is this sort of, the development of Fairhaven is what is unique because of the different neighborhoods and particular zoning. And so you have a lot of sort of uniqueness to the lot. But if you can even land on top of that in a conservative town, um you know, how do we regulate? Without, without being unfair, and it's it's imperfect. I think most people have been here a long time, decades and decades and decades, for both women and I, we struggle and some of you can't. But we can't have a fit that says you're going to be treated one way and you're going to be treated another. And that's just, that's just the way it happens.
Thank you, Tom. Any other, uh, any other comments from the public? So I'll uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Oh, sorry, that's right.
Um I expect it will be in no more than one half hour, if that. And I don't think we're going to be taking any other action other than to adjourn at the end of that session.
That's correct. Yes.
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 Mr. Noel.
Yes.
Mr. Rob.
Yes.
Mr. Nicka.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're the Aldego off and.
I will uh move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Thanks, everyone.